Welcome to Conversations with the Candidates. My name is Jeff Reichman. This program is brought to you by the League of Women Voters Education Fund and Houston Media Source. Tonight, we're going to be talking to the two candidates for District A for Houston City Council. We're going to ask them a number of questions about all the issues that the city of Houston is facing over the next two years. And we invited all of the candidates to join us here tonight, and these are the ones who hollered back. Up first, we have Brenda Stardig, who is the incumbent council member. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Excellent. So why don't we jump right into this? I'd like to talk about the 800-pound gorilla in the room, and that's unfunded pension liabilities. It's a major issue for the city of Houston. What are your ideas about how to address the current pension issues and how to prevent similar situations in the future?
As you said, it's a major issue facing the city, but at the same time, there's more moving parts that need to be identified and data collected than people are talking about. It's more than a soundbite. It's more complicated, and you've got a lot of commitments that have been made by prior administrations that we're trying to honor. At the same time, we're trying to make it sustainable for those that will be retiring out in the future. Also, we have a lot of new hires. So as the new hires come in, they were counting on those to help support some of the outcome of the ones that are in the pipeline. So we've got a lot of moving parts that have to be considered. It's not just a matter of, oh, we're going to just change the system. You hear that a lot in the campaigns, and that's where I'm a little uneasy about the conversations. I think the public understands that there is an issue, and without everyone coming to the table under the current structure and agreeing, we won't move anywhere. So we can't be beating up on our employees at the same time and expect them to come to the table and work with us. First of all, we shouldn't be beating up our employees in the first place. We appreciate all of our employees, all the work they've done. They do a fabulous job. It's nothing personal. It's about making sure that there's retirement there for them in the future.
So do you then, in terms of strategies for addressing the pension issues, do you support local control?
It depends. If it had been under the current administration, I would have been uncomfortable with it because the current administration does not have a good working relationship with fire, for example. And if we'd had local control under the current situation, I wouldn't have been confident or comfortable with moving forward with local control. Now, to say that when the legislature meets again, to get that local control at that point, depending on who the next mayor is, that unfortunately plays into this as well. So if they can't work with -- the next mayor must be able to work with fire, police, and our employee pension groups so that we can all come to an agreement that will work for not only the employees, but for the citizens, for Houstonians, for all of us, for all of our future.
Excellent. Moving on to the 700-pound gorilla in the room. In a city as large as Houston, building and maintaining infrastructure is a challenge. How do you think the city should tackle its infrastructure issues, including how to pay for it?
That's another one that's under a lot of scrutiny with the rebuild Houston and the current system. I think the rebuild is a great approach, very conservative approach, pay-as-you-go. But we also know that there's current needs in the system, and if we continue to push our needs down the road, then we're going to be paying a premium for that construction, for the infrastructure. So while we're saving money and paying down some of our debt, we're causing more cost down the road, in my opinion, because it's going to come at a premium. So with the construction costs and all that are involved, we have to forecast that. When is the best time to build? Because you want it to make it affordable as possible. You want the best deal. I'm Brenda Bargenheimer. I want to make sure that I get the best deal for the city and for the taxpayers, and to make sure that we're responsive as well. Right now, if we continue with the way we're going with the potholes, my goodness, I'm on first-name basis with discount tire guys. That's not a good place to be. So we need to make sure that we find a happy medium there and work towards that. I think that citizens expect that the taxes they paid for the last 50 years, that they get something for their money, and that they can have good roads. Drainage is a huge issue. Drainage in many parts of the city. Houses have flooded in the last two major events. That's a real issue that we've got to make some corrections there. I actually drove my entire district with the Director of Public Works, and we highlighted and I showed him the areas that need attention, immediate attention. And I think there's some quick fixes, and I think there's some long-term fixes that can make a real difference on getting water out of people's homes and keeping it out of their homes.
That makes sense. On that same thread of infrastructure, what is your vision over the next few years for public transportation in Houston?
Right now, I'm concerned about getting 290 done, and that's actually a tech stop project, but it's impacting my district. My district starts, it's I-10 at 610 West and goes all the way out to Texas Children's Hospital past the Energy Corridor near the Barker Cypress area, and then just swings northwest and goes across Hempstead and across 290 and takes in Inwood and captures Willowbrook. And we need to make sure that we're moving people on the existing roads with what we have, and we just don't have -- we need to keep them moving because what we're doing is we're dumping the traffic that would normally be on 290 down Beltway 8 or down the Grand Parkway and onto I-10, and it's filling up quicker than they ever anticipated, I believe. So there's current infrastructure issues and transportation issues that we need to take care of so that we can keep people moving. West Houston, northwest Houston, we're attached to our cars. So my constituents are very dependent on keeping those roads in place. I know there's other parts of town that prefer rail and other things like that, but I know the talk is that the high-speed rail from Dallas to Houston -- and I said from Dallas to Houston, not Houston to Dallas, on purpose. So we want to make sure that if that's the intention, because they don't even have to come to City Council for permission. Railroad has had eminent domain and a lot of power for, well, for 200 years or however many years it's been. And so they can come down the Hempstead Highway, and in doing so, I've got the Union Pacific here, and then you add the elevated high-speed rail, and then if commuter starts talking, they've been talking about coming underneath there. Do we end up landlocking Spring Branch? I'm really concerned about these things, and so I've started the conversations ahead of time and being proactive rather than reactive and keeping people moving to their jobs and not landlocking our communities, and making sure if there's more infrastructure that we need to anticipate and negotiate before this happens. I don't want anyone to not be able to get to their job or to other parts of town, and it's just not right.
That's fair. With oil prices well below $50 a barrel at this time, many Houstonians are at risk for losing their jobs, and in fact, many already have. Despite the fact that Houston is a multi-industry town, it still does not look good in terms of our energy forecast. What policies and programs should be in place to protect the city's economy?
Well, that's a tough question. I have the Energy Corridor in my area, and I know that there's a lot of things that impact our community. I grew up here in Houston. I'm a native Houstonian, and so I remember the '80s. I remember when the last big impact was. I spoke with a group of U of H students recently, and I told them, I said, "I don't want you ever to be in the position I was in of deciding whether you go to work, go ahead and take that job, or finish your education. I want you to be comfortable in the fact that when you do go, whatever choice it is, whether it's a trade school or whatever that education is past high school or secondary, that you have choices, job choices, good job choices, something that you're going to be happy with, not that it's a default mechanism and that this is something you had to do." So with that, every decision I make on council, I consider that. So one policy or two policies, I don't know if there's a grand answer to that, but I think that it's very important that everything, every time, every decision we make, we do impact all of those things that impact our students and everyone that's coming out of school and all those workers that are working at the Energy Corridor and across our entire city in the energy sector. So it's important to me that we're very careful and very responsible in our decisions.
Excellent. Okay. In terms of technology, as a city council member, how would you use technology to better serve and communicate with citizens?
I love this question. We had this conversation before we started about technology. When I hit the office the first time, I was all about what technology can we add to the city. The fact of the matter is, when I arrived at the city in 2010, I think it was, I felt like we were in the 1980s. Technology was not a priority at the city, and we failed on a number of parts because what they would do is they'd get a project, and they would get it funded to a certain point, and when the money ran out, then some of the things, the enhancements and things that they could have done with technology was left off. And even if it was a disaster recovery plan or whatever it is, they got the basic core function going and the workaround and kept moving. So now, I think there's an opportunity to communicate, as you said, to our citizens. I know we have a rollout app with the -- and I have it on my phone right now, my iPhone. Tells you when you can put out your heavy trash, or your trash, or your recycle. If you don't have that on your phone today, I suggest you go -- I didn't have it handy. I didn't know you were going to ask me the question. Otherwise, I would have told everyone where to find it. But there is a rollout app. So there's so many things that we can do to communicate. The budget, everything to be transparent can be online, available. There's no reason for anyone not to have information at the city. My staff does a fabulous job of -- we have an e-newsletter, and it has so much information. We have e-blast. We have so many ways of communicating today with Facebook, Twitter, and believe it or not, even at my stage in life, I am all about all of that. I'm very, very capable and thankful that I have a staff as well.
That's awesome. That's excellent. So in terms of criminal justice, when candidates speak of crime prevention, they often propose a formula of more cops equals less crime. When in reality, the systemic causes of crime are linked to issues of education, issues of poverty, issues of opportunity, what crime intervention and prevention policies do you support that will systemically address crime?
As you say, what I call the root cause of a lot of the crime is that we need to build the confidence and pride in our community. What I look at is, there's still a lot of blight in some of the neighborhoods that while they are getting their education or they are doing the right thing, they're having to live next to an apartment community that has lived out its entire life cycle, and it's become, in my opinion, dead. It's dead on arrival, and it needs to go. We have what we call slum lords, and they're usually not here. And because those buildings are there, they end up being havens for crime. While I appreciate what you're saying as far as the programs and all, but I look at more of what we can do immediately to rid our communities of the blight. The Antoine Corridor area is in my district, and we were able to take down an apartment over there, Candlelight Trails, the condominiums over there, and you could see the changes in the community. You can start seeing it. Ellis Square went down, and you could see it changing. And I can't tell you how many people have thanked me for the work we've done on taking on those slum lords, and they're usually, they don't live in Houston most of the time. They're absentee landlords that don't take care of their properties or the people, their tenants. They take their money, and then that's the end of it. I'm working with some others right now, and quite frankly, they take advantage of our neighbors, and I don't appreciate it at all. And so I do everything I can to address the root cause, what I call the root cause, and for calls for service and other things that -- it's a drain on our police. It's a drain on our fire, and it's a dangerous situation for the people that have to live there with their children and their families. It's just not right.
Fair enough. What are the three primary quality of life indicators that you would use as a metric to develop policy around and to serve your constituents?
Tell me what you're looking for there, because I want to make sure of that.
Sure. Just your three primary quality of life indicators. It could be crime rates. It could be potholes fixed. It could be traffic reduced. Really, the question is aimed to help voters better understand kind of the broad strokes of your tenure.
I focus primarily on -- you have to focus on public safety, economic development, and infrastructure. And within each of those, you have to be able to focus on deliverables. You can't continue just to constantly talk about it. We have a plan to plan, and we have a meeting to meet, and we have to get projects on the ground. When we talk about infrastructure, we talk about crime and public safety. Once again, I keep going back to those two things. We have this habit of meeting to meet and to plan to plan. And quite frankly, we've got homes, as I said earlier, that are being flooded, and that's where my focus is, is we've got homes that are being flooded, and we keep talking about it, and we keep analyzing it. The fact of the matter is, we need to get projects on the ground and get us, the city, moving forward. I'm really proud of my tenure at City Hall. I am a fiscal conservative. I've watched the bottom line. I make sure that, look for efficiencies in the departments. In my first term, excuse me, in my first term, we had the opportunity to go in and look for opportunities to save taxpayer dollars because we were at a point where we were going to have to lay off fire or police. And so I rolled up my sleeves and made sure that we got into the weeds and we looked at for opportunities to save the taxpayer dollars, and we did. We had, when times are good, no one's really paying that close attention to the detail. When times are bad, wow, everybody's, oh, we've got to get it going. And we don't want to be in that position. We want to be proactive rather than reactive. So I want to look for systematic approaches to putting things in place, like with our fire department, our fire safety. To me, there should be priorities set, and it shouldn't be at the political will of whoever's in the mayor's seat. It should be, this is the basic amount of training that should be in place, and then we go from there and fund outside of that for other things. It's the same thing with police, same thing with everything that we do. We should have a systematic approach in place to what our priorities are and go from there. I find it difficult some days when we go off on these other things because I really want to focus on wants versus needs. When you talk about wants, we all want a great world. We want a perfect world. I'm not going to pick on any particular projects. We want all these great things, but what is it we really need? When we're talking about taxpayer dollars, there's a lot of folks out there on fixed incomes. They can't afford another, they couldn't afford a tax increase or another fee, or so we've got to be, and even if they could, should we burden them with it? We need to be down here doing what we need to be doing, which is public safety, water, sewer, nothing glamorous. I didn't come here to save the world. I came here to provide city services and the role of municipal government. What is the role of municipal government?
Well, that's a good question to end that response on because I would put back to you, on the ballot this fall is going to be the Houston Equal Rights Ordinance, and it's very important to voters. And what is your position on the Equal Rights Ordinance? Do you support it? Why or why not?
Actually, I voted against it, and I voted to repeal it, and then I voted to put it on the ballot for the people to decide because it is that important for the people to decide. Once again, to me, I came here to focus on what is the role of municipal government? What is our role? And to me, our role is to make sure that the sewage is going away from your home, that the good, clean water is coming to your home, your garbage is being picked up, and that you feel that you have public safety available to you when you need it. And right now, we continue to, once again, I am very much against discrimination. I had the privilege of being asked to be on Miss Wheelchair Texas Board of Directors. I received the Angel Advocate Award. This is the first time we've had an automated door at City Hall. I'm really proud of that fact, and I know Lex and all those that have worked for so many years, 25 years since the ADA was passed, and here we are just finally getting a door, automated door at City Hall. Someone that rolls up in a wheelchair had to wait outside for a kind soul to walk by and open the door for them. Those are the things I want to focus on, the needs of our citizens. What do we need to be doing? Things that we haven't been doing in the past that we should have been doing. And that automated door is just an example of what, how we handle things. The fact of the matter is, that automated door is, yes, it's for a person in a wheelchair, but it's also for someone that's maybe older or someone that can't handle those big, beautiful doors that we have at City Hall. So it's not only going to benefit someone in a wheelchair, it's also going to benefit someone that may be aging or has a child in a stroller or whatever the case may be. It becomes a convenience for others, but a necessity for those that really need it. So I think these are the things, it's sort of my moral compass is to do what's right for all and keep focused on that.
That's good.
For all Houstonians.
So there's a national narrative of strained law enforcement relationships with communities of color and the LGBT communities in various cities. What can we do in Houston to improve our law enforcement relationships with these communities?
I think that, I think there's a great opportunity here to get the police officers in. We've been talking about getting our police officers to give them an incentive to move into the city. I think we've been working on this for a while now, and it came before council, and it's been tagged this week, so you can stay tuned for that. But we're looking for opportunities to bring police officers that, whether they're coming straight out of the academy or they're coming, they're already here. The fact of the matter is, they need to be a part of the fabric of our community, and I think they would feel a bit more of a connection and more passion for their neighbor if they knew what they were going through on a daily basis. Not to say that our current police officers don't know, but I think when we get them right out of the academy, I'm sort of, I want to capture them right there and get them that path of least resistance to homeownership in Houston, get them into a program. I'm an old banker, so I'm looking for a package that will say, okay, if you come to Houston, we'll give you, we'll get you a great rate on this, and let's get you settled in Houston. Because it also anchors them into the community and it makes better relations for everyone. Plus, as an example, they're going to and from work, and they're going through the neighborhoods. So they don't turn off law enforcement 24, they're on 24/7. So whether it's with the LGBT or whether it's with other communities, when we all focus on the fact that we're Houstonians and that we're all part of a community, to me, that's that sense of pride in taking care of each other. I really believe that if you're a good neighbor in this world, that it doesn't matter which community you're from. We're all Houstonians, and we're all looking out for each other, and I truly believe that.
Council member, thank you so much. I appreciate you taking the time to join us here today. If you'd like, we just have about a minute left. If you'd like to look into the camera and tell the voters of District A why they should vote for you again and retain you as their city council member?
Sure. I'm Brenda Stardig. I am your current city council member. I ask humbly for your vote. I appreciate the opportunity to serve the 200,000 constituents in District A and the 2.2 million Houstonians. I think it's important to all of us that we work together as a community, we build strong communities, and we look at our future. Please visit brendastardig.com, and thank you, and I appreciate your vote.
Thank you so much, council member. It's a pleasure to have you here. For those of you at home or watching on the internet, stay tuned. We'll be right back with the second candidate for District A Houston City Council. Welcome back to Conversations with the Candidates. My name is Jeff Reichman. This program is brought to you by the League of Women Voters Education Fund and Houston Media Source. If you'd like to know more about the various elections going on in Houston and get data about the candidates, you can visit vote411.org or houston.vote, and I encourage you all to check it out. I'm back with the second candidate for District A Houston City Council, Ayesha Wilson. Ayesha, welcome.
Thank you for having me.
Absolutely. So we're going to go through about 10 questions for you, and I'll get right to it. Unfunded pension liability is a major issue in the city of Houston. What are your ideas about how to address the current pension issues and how to prevent similar situations in the future?
Good question. I really think it's a travesty that the city employees, firefighters, and police are even having to deal with this. The city should never have to decide if they're going to pay for a time that's already been served. I think that they should have done a better job in negotiating their contract from the beginning, but since they didn't, let's go ahead, get the contracts paid, figure out a way. You have to. We're a great city. We have a lot of new things coming in. It's like a melting pot, and I feel like they can make wiggle room. Go ahead and honor your contracts. But for the new people that are coming in, let's find another way to get them, not the same deal, but another type of pension where everybody is happy.
Do you support local control of the fire pension?
I do.
Okay. Do you care to?
I do because I feel like when it's in-house, you can kind of see what's going on, but when it's somewhere else, it's like you have to kind of depend on them to, okay, well, this is what we're going to give you. But when you have it in the city's control and you have a good council and mayor who can hash out everything that needs to be hashed out, I think it'll work. I think it'll work.
The other big issue in this election is infrastructure.
Yes.
In a city as large as Houston, building and maintaining infrastructure is a big challenge. How should the city tackle its infrastructure issues, including how to pay for it?
Okay. Every infrastructure project that comes up is budgeted, so the money is there. It's just deciding on if you're giving it to the right people to do. If you give it to developers who are not really good at their job and they just want the money, they're going to just, okay, we're going to do it to their standard, but not to the city's standard. The problem that they had on 290 was the contractors were no good. That's why they were not working. That's why there was no work on 290. And so I stay off 290, so sometimes you don't see anybody working, which is a huge problem for traffic. So before you can build anything, you need to finish what you've already started. And not just finish it to say, "We finished it," but to finish it, finish it right, including the drainage, the detention ponds, to make this... If it had been fixed right the first time, we wouldn't have flooding now. In my neighborhood where I stay, in Carverdale, just outside of Jersey Village, which is now, has now been branched under Spring Branch, we've never flooded like we flooded now, to the point you can't even leave out your yard. So if you go back and look at the older projects that they've done, and the project that they're doing now, did they really do a good job at making sure the storm runoffs, the drainages, the detention ponds were going to be at capacity for the rains that come? Because we can't predict the weather. You know what I'm saying? That's Mother Nature. So you have to be prepared. You know, we don't want a city to where we want everybody to come, but it's flooded. Who wants to move to a place that's not stable? Who wants to buy a house in a neighborhood, and then one good rain, they're flooded? So that's my take on it.
Excellent. Along the same lines of infrastructure, what is your vision for public transportation in Houston?
I think that Houston is so far behind in public transportation. I've stayed in Atlanta. When you go to Washington, New York, they all... They've been had the rail system. And I think it's good that they have the rail downtown, but what about the people who drive a longer distance outside of the city? You know, it's so much traffic because of construction. Why not put the rail in Houston to go from different parts of Texas? It'll save on gas, you know, save miles on the car, save on the potholes that you run into, save on all this construction and traffic. It just makes for a better commute, I think.
Excellent. Let's talk about the economy for a moment.
Sure.
With oil prices well below $50 a barrel at this point.
Right.
Many Houstonians are at risk for losing their jobs, and in fact, many already have. What policies and programs should be in place to protect the economy?
Okay. I think every company... I know they give them a service package, but I think every company should, in the oil and gas industry, let's say, they're looking at, okay, well, we're going to make this money. See, when you're higher up, you don't have to worry about when it was high, expensive for barrels of oil, whatever. They didn't have to worry about, well, I'm not worried about that. But, see, they're not thinking about the people below them that's not making a big money, you know, that are at better risk for losing their job. And I think that they should have to answer. You know what I'm saying? Because the company's still making money, it's just they have to cut in order to keep their profit. So I think that the city, they need to have some kind of sit-down and pow-wow and talk to find out, how can we keep the citizens, not just of District A, but of Houston, employed? So that's money coming into the city if you have people paying taxes, people buying houses. You know, that's income. So I think the city needs to sit down with them, to see how they can help them maybe, protect them to protect their employees.
That makes sense. As a city council member, how would you use technology to better serve and communicate with citizens?
Okay. I think the city of Houston is doing a good job at trying to make everything online now, but I think it kind of starts when you have students in school. If you train them up learning technology, because that's what this... This is the future. Technology is the future. So why not catch them while they're young? So when they're older, maybe they're going to be voters, you know, coming out of high school, 18, they're voters. So they could have... City could have a program set up for students in school to help improve upon the website, improve upon... So I know there's a lot of older citizens that vote, and that, just in the city, don't really use computers. And I know they have programs at the public library and stuff like that, but let's go a step further. Let's make it an incentive for the students. Okay, well, if you can mentor or train, they need community service hours. That can be a part of the community service hours. You have to kind of open it up and stop and not keep it, okay, well, only this library does, and we only have one person to do it, and they only do it on this day. No, 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 no. Have the citizens in that community go to the local high schools. They're everywhere. Go to the local high schools for 20 or 30 minutes, or even an hour. Have the students teach the citizens that don't know. Not only are the citizens learning, but their kids are getting what they need to get to college, as far as community service hours.
That's great. So when candidates speak of crime prevention, they often propose a formula of more cops equals less crime. When in reality, the systemic causes of crime are linked to issues of education, issues of poverty, issues of opportunity. What crime intervention and prevention policies do you support that will systemically address crime?
That's a great question. Because where I stay, even this morning, it was somebody who stole a police car. How that happens, I have no idea. But I think it starts when they're young. You teach them... Because nowadays, kids see so much crime going on in the world, in their neighborhoods, to their family members, to their fathers, their mothers, you know, their brothers or sisters, or cousins. They don't have any trust. So what you have to do, you have to rebuild the trust between the police and the citizens in the area. And once you do that, then you can let the children know, hey, it's okay to trust an officer. It's okay to come talk to an officer. It's not okay to do crime, because once you do a crime, you're going to have to be punished for the crime. And I think on the officer's side, they need to learn a better approach to the citizens in the lower-income areas, in, you know, in the minority areas, in the poverty areas. They have to have a better approach than how they are approaching the citizens. Me, myself, I was a victim of racial profiling. Why? Because of the location I was in, the vehicle I was driving, and the color of my skin. And the officer told me and my husband that. So I feel like if they can, in training, while they're in their cadet training, teach them about how to approach, especially with things that are going on now, because when you don't, and you just let them just, okay, we're just going to go out here, or we're going to assume... You can't always assume, because you don't know what kind of day a citizen is having. Like, we don't know what kind of day a police officer is having. So it has to be some kind of mutual respect in order for us to get this crime prevention together.
Makes sense. What are the three primary quality-of-life indicators that you would use as a metric to develop policy around and serve your constituents?
Definitely crime prevention. If we can prevent it early, while they're in school, it won't... I don't think it'll be as much. Education. If we can get the students educated like they're supposed to be educated... We have a lot of teachers that are really tired, that don't want to teach, that just dare for a check, because they feel like they're not being treated properly through their school district. So it reflects on how you teach the kids. If you can get teachers who really love to teach kids, who wants to help train kids to be productive citizens in our society, I think the city would be great. Also, the infrastructure. We got to get this flooding under control. This drainage and detention problems, I have talked to super neighborhood presidents, they're not happy. I've talked to other citizens and constituents, they're not happy. It should not be taking this long for the city to get control of flooding. It shouldn't be taking this long to get the city in control of that I-10... I mean, that 290 part. I-10, it wasn't this bad on I-10. I-10 was a big, major project. But 290, it seemed like it's just dragging forever. And that makes people like, well, I don't want to stay on 290. I don't want to go that way. So what happens to the sales tax dollars and property tax dollars out there? Now they're in another part. You know what I'm saying? So I just think those are like the major parts. And another one is the veterans. I feel like we are forgetting about our vets. And I feel like there needs to be some... The city needs to come up with some kind of program to help the vets better than what they have been doing. I've seen so many on 290, and they don't want... They feel like the city, the veterans affair, all... Department of Veterans Affairs, they don't care about them. And I've told them, you know, I care. I come from a family of vets. My grandmother was a vet. You know, my brother... Both of my brothers are military vets. My cousins are vets. My uncles are vets. My great uncles are vets. So I can understand the problems that they're having, because I hear it. My little brother just served 12 years, six Army, six Marine. So I can... I see the problems that he goes through. And I just feel like they need to come up with a better solution for our veterans that are homeless, on the street, and feel like they don't have any help.
Excellent. So on the ballot this fall is the Houston Equal Rights Ordinance. What is your position on that?
Well, I am against it. I'm a Christian, and I believe in the Bible to my whole heart. And I feel like, let the people decide. Let them have a say-so. Don't just make it your own personal judgment, but let the people decide. I feel like some of the things in the ordinance, they're already protected by federal law. So why put them back in and to make it a city law? No, 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 no. Let the federal have that. Let that be done... Let that stay in the federal realm, you know? But since they put it out there, let the people decide.
Okay. How can we improve law enforcement relationships with communities of color and the GLBT community? You alluded to it a little bit before. Maybe you can expand a little bit more about this national narrative and what's happening here in Houston.
I just don't want what's happened nationally to happen here. And it's kind of already starting to creep with the Sandra Bland thing, and it was... It's a lot of stuff that's not on the news, that people don't see. I just think there needs to be some kind of more respect between the community and the law enforcement, between the... Everybody. Everybody needs to have respect for everybody. If you respect your neighbor, it wouldn't be a problem. But when there's no communication going on, it's always going to be some kind of assumption. And I just feel like it starts with respect and understanding and communication.
Interesting, okay. Houston is known as the country's most diverse city. What do you see as the value in our diversity? And what would you do to capitalize on this distinction?
Well, the value is, we have more and more people coming here, and they're buying more. So what you do is, you... I know we're worried about infrastructure, but once you get the infrastructure under control, then you think about building more what the people like, not just what the city wants, but ask the people what they want. See, the thing is, the city council, the mayor, they really don't ask the voters what they want, the taxpayers what they want. Ask us what we want, what we like in each area. That way, you don't have to worry about driving 45 minutes somewhere, you know, in traffic. Then, when you get there, you're frustrated because you've been in the car for 45 minutes, so you can't really enjoy yourself. But spread out everything across the city of Houston. So every area, and if you choose to drive, then that's you. But kind of open it up for the people to kind of decide, like, yes, this is what we would like, no, that's not what we would like. That way, you don't have to worry about businesses closing because nobody goes.
Okay. According to the Pew Research Center, Houston leads the country in economic segregation, with the affluent more likely to live among the affluent, the poor among the poor, with fewer Houston neighborhoods hosting middle-class households. Professor Kleinberg of Rice University has referred to residential economic segregation as one of our greatest challenges. What role can the city of Houston play in ensuring that there are thriving, mixed-income, middle-class, and low-income neighborhoods in Houston?
That's a good question. That's going to take the whole board to sit down and decide what each... They feel each of their areas need to improve upon, and how they can mix the incomes, different incomes, different poverty levels, different people. That's really up to the board to come with, and the mayor.
All right. With the additions of bike lanes downtown as an example, how can we continue to expand pedestrian-friendly commuting options throughout the city?
I don't know. I think it's all based on the people. People are the ones who are driving, so they have to be friendly. You have to be friendly. Then you wouldn't have as many car wrecks, or if you let... If you see somebody's blinker, let them over. If they're trying to get out, let them out. It's not going to hurt, you know? You letting them out might could save you from something that's going to happen down the line. So I just think... And I think the bike lanes are great, actually, because in how... I know they've repainted some, and it lets the people know, hey, we're on the street too. So I just think it's... The people really have to do their part in that.
Although it will not be on the ballot this November, it's clear that conversations around the city's revenue cap may continue to surface in the next term. What effect do you think, positive or negative, the revenue cap is currently having on the city? And what's your stance on whether or not to lift or modify it?
I don't think we should lift it. I think the people voted for it, leave it there. If you can improve it, go back over it to help the people lower taxes, then do that. But don't change it to where it increases taxes. Let the people... What the people said, stay. Don't try to change what the people said to benefit you in the long run. So if the people voted for it, leave it there. If you can improve upon it and show the people you, hey, we can help you, we can... It can be better as far as taxes, then we'll change it to that. But other than that, leave it where it's at.
Okay. Well, what about term limits? It's recently been communicated that term limits will be placed on the ballot. As a candidate for city council, what's your position on term limits? Are you in favor of the three-term limit of two years each? Do you favor an alternate two-term limit of four years each, or an entirely different approach?
I like the two-term limit at four years each, because then it gives you enough time to do what you set out to do, or to help the community in the way you feel like they say they want the changes or improvements. So I think if they can change it to four years, then that gives you eight years to get your area to improve upon Houston and make the citizens happy. Two years, it's okay, but it's not enough time to really do what you need to do, when you have so many things being pressed, and everybody's saying their stuff is important. I think four years would be a good thing.
Awesome. Well, Ayesha, thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you.
If you'd like to look into the camera and address the voters of District A and tell them why they should vote for you for Houston City Council.
Sure. My name is Ayesha Eris Wilson. I am the city council candidate for District A, and I would really appreciate your vote. I feel like I have some great ideas. I think I can bring about a better change to what's going on into the district, as well as the city of Houston. I can reach that www.AyeshaWilson.com, and also on Facebook. Look me up. It's I-E-S-H-E-I-A-W-I-L-S-O-N. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Ayesha.
Thank you.
For those of you at home, stay tuned. We're going to be right back. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Welcome back to Conversations with the Candidates. My name is Jeff Reichman. This program is brought to you by the League of Women Voters Education Fund, as well as Houston Media Source. We've wrapped up with the two candidates for District A for Houston City Council, had some great conversations with them. And I'd like to talk to you a little bit about what the League of Women Voters is doing this fall in order to get out the vote and to inform voters. For one, the Texas ballot is very long and complicated. It helps if you get familiar with the ballot and the choices long before you show up to the polls. You can do this by going to vote411.org. That'll give you all the information about the candidates and the positions and the issues on the ballot. The League is in the process of potentially debuting a mobile app that will help you with that information and help you determine what the different things that you'd like to vote on. We are also launching Houston.Vote, which is a website dedicated to all of our kind of outside-the-box, get-out-the-vote campaigns. Over the course of the summer, my company, January Advisors, along with the Black Sheep Agency, the League of Women Voters, and a host of other partners, have been doing studies around Houston. around Houston to better understand why people vote and why people don't. We have a 13% voter turnout rate in this, in this city. That's about 137,000 people actually showing up to vote. It's one of the worst voter turnouts of any major American city. And some people like to say that's because times are good. So I would like to, to think that our democracy is healthy and that the people here in Houston would like to vote. And I know that between me and all the other people who host this program, we care deeply about people just voting, not who you vote for, just voting. So you can go to Houston.Vote and vote 411 to get information about the League-sponsored activities. But there's also a lot of other activities happening in your backyard. For example, on Saturday morning, there's going to be a Blueprint Houston Candidates Debate. There's a forum for what to do with stray animals in two weeks. There is, there seems to be something happening every single day. We are putting together a series of murals, with the first mural to debut on the site of KPFT on Lovett Boulevard in Montrose, painted by Nikki Davis. We are putting together two technology debates, where candidates will discuss how technology is used in city government and the things that they can do to improve it. On October 8th, we're going to talk to the candidates for City Controller, which is the chief financial officer of the city. So technology and data and transparency is of the utmost importance. And then after the general election, we're going to speak with the two runoff candidates for mayor about technology. Both of those debates will happen at the Houston Technology Center, and both are coordinated by the League of Women Voters. Beyond that, I'd say, keep watching, keep watching conversations with the candidates, keep reading the Houston Chronicle and other publications and the City Hall beat writers, and keep checking in with the League of Women Voters, because we're going to do our best to present to you in the most unbiased fashion, all of the views of the candidates, so that you can cast an informed ballot. So I thank you very much for your time tonight. My name is Jeff Reichman. On behalf of the League of Women Voters Education Fund, and on behalf of Houston Media Source, thank you and good night.